And I'll also just note that it's our first board meeting with our new superintendent, Rob Anderson, Dr. Rob Anderson. We're so appreciative that you are here and we're so excited. So Laura, would you please call the roll?
Benford.
Here.
Fuqua.
Garcia.
Here.
Gebhardt.
Here.
Marquis.
Here.
Myers.
Here.
Sargent.
Okay, so please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance. So I'd like to remind everybody that the mission of the Boulder Valley School District is to create challenging, meaningful, and engaging learning opportunities so that all children thrive and are prepared for successful, civically engaged lives. Again, thank you for coming and for participating in our meetings. And we'll start with Dr. Anderson's superintendent report.
Board President, Marquise, members of the board. I can't tell you how excited I am to be here. And I wanted to start with just a genuine thank you for an opportunity of a lifetime for me and for our family. So we're so happy to be here after a 1,500-mile trek cross-country. My family is settling in and just really want to thank you for the opportunity. But I'd like to take some of the opportunity to thank some other folks. I'd like to thank my cabinet. Many of them are here tonight. If you please stand, cabinet members. It's always assuring when you join a new team, when you feel like you're joining a winning team. And the cabinet has just been wonderful in helping me get oriented in the district, helping support me, so I wanted to thank them all publicly. I appreciate you all so very much. And you can grab a seat. I want to thank Laura in particular, Laura Schaefer, who's my assistant and also now assists the board, has just been amazing in getting me ready and helping me out. So Laura, thank you so much. I really appreciate it. And just a general welcome, the warm welcome that we've received from this entire community has been truly amazing. Everywhere we go, we meet fantastic people. And when they find out that I'm the superintendent, they're twice as fantastic. So it's been wonderful. It truly has. And so I've been out in the community over the past month, board members. I'll be giving you a monthly update on my 100-day plan. I've been giving those to you on a weekly basis in some of our communications. And just focusing on engagement, excellence, and equity. For those that are watching at home, I intend to be everywhere. I shouldn't be a strange face, so you should be able to recognize me if I've done my job well. I intend on going to all 57 schools within the first few months on the job and gathering feedback and understanding what makes this place great and what are the problems that we need to work together to solve. And so very excited. I would say that the 100-day plan is going very, very well. I was actually had an opportunity, I'll make one more comment. I was able to attend the El Dorado K-8 ribbon-cutting ceremony today. Principal Robin Hamasaki did an excellent job. It was a wonderful celebration of bond work that we couldn't do without the taxpayer support, I want to thank, make sure our taxpayers know how much we appreciate that. Want to thank the elected officials that were able to be there, Mayor Clint Folsom and trustee Mark Lasis, who were able to be there and share in that moment with us. And it was just a wonderful, wonderful afternoon. And so those are the comments that I have. Again, thank you for this opportunity. I truly appreciate it.
Thank you so much. Were there any questions the board had? No? Okay. And so our next item is public participation. Laura, I'm not seeing anyone signed up. Is that correct?
I have not had anyone sign up. Is there anyone out there? Okay.
So then we'll move right on to board communication, board members.
I don't have anything other than to welcome you, Rob. We're so happy that you're here and to welcome all of our new principals. It's really you guys who make it all happen in the schools. And so we're just so happy to see all of you. And here we go.
I second that. Shelley, thanks everyone that's here tonight. The, I think one of my highlights for the summer though was the walks that I took at Sanchez Elementary School with our principal Kent and meeting the families. And the reception that the principal was getting as we were knocking on doors were surprises, expressions of surprises like, "You're visiting me?" You know, things like that. And it was just a wonderful, wonderful way to spend at least a week with Kent. Getting to know, getting to know him really well too and see the passion and the heart that he's got for that community. So I really want to give kudos to Kent for having me participate in that walk with him.
Yes, welcome, Rob. I'm excited for new beginnings with you, with our school district. And one of my highlights of this summer was meeting with a recent graduate last week for coffee. And she had written her administrators at her high school along with the letter she sent to the board about some concerns she had. And those concerns were around dating and consent and sexual harassment. And she wrote such a good letter but also offered solutions. And I told her that I would take it to heart. But what was really impactful for me was to hear how great her teachers had been. And one teacher in particular, Mrs. Neeb, had developed a real strong relationship with her. And it made her decide she wants to go into the teaching profession. And it just, to see the thread that we connect with our students and with our teachers and with our district officials or administrators, it was impactful for me. And I enjoyed meeting with her and I just wanted to pass that on. Thank you.
Second what Shelley said, and I also want to thank Rob and his team for all the work that they did over the summer. I'm sure there have been lots of long days working on all the bond projects across the district. And so kudos to everybody for, I know the jobs are still not done, but I just want to thank everybody for all the hard work they've done around the bond projects. And a couple of things over the summer that were highlights for me. One was attending the meeting up in Netherlands with you and with Margaret and meeting with the community up there. And before I came to that meeting, I met with the administrative director of Chinook and meeting the staff up there and the great work that they're doing with those at-risk students was really awesome. And also had an opportunity to visit justice. And I'm looking forward to figuring out how we can improve those facilities because I think they are the worst facilities we have in the district. And the message we give to those kids needs to be one that we care as much about them as we care about the other students. So I'm looking forward to figuring out how we work on those schools. But the work that's done there with these teachers and TJ and the principals at both schools is just really overwhelming and really awesome. Because without that work, I don't know that those kids would be in school and wouldn't be looking at the brighter futures that they have as a result of the hard work of those teachers and those administrators. So that was a highlight of the summer. So thank you and welcome, and welcome to all the new principals, and thank you for all the hard work everybody did over the summer. I also during board comment wanted to just bring up that at the end of the month, if the board wants to have any resolutions for CASB, I would welcome any conversation around that. We didn't make it an action item. And in the past, at least the three years, the almost three years I've been on the board, we have not submitted resolutions. But I know that there are some issues that we might want to have the legislature address or look at from BVSD's perspective. And so I'm just kind of putting out that if there's questions or issues that you would want to bring up and have addressed as a CASB resolution, to think about that because we need the resolutions by the end of the month and then the resolutions committee meets in like the second week of September. So I just wanted to remind everybody of that because in the past, we've kind of, it was Laura prompting me, those deadlines have kind of slipped by us. And so to the extent that anyone has any issues, I was thinking around maybe strengthening on data privacy or issues around the charter funding or the new, there could be a new school finance bill or other things that we might want to look at from BVSD perspective. So I just put that out there. So thanks.
And I want to also echo what Shelley said. Looking forward to a great start to the year and to officially welcome Rob. We're so delighted to have you here. And it's one of my highlights of the summer was meeting with, and he's a recent graduate, recent being 2012, but he's just graduated from college. He's a graduate of Monarch High and he is running for public office for trustee of the town of Superior. And I love to see that our graduates are doing great things. It's really nice to see. And he's a very smart young man. His name is Dalton Valet. And if you come across him, you will enjoy his conversations.
So now let's move on to our first information item, which is the back-to-school update.
Thank you. I'm going to ask that our cabinet team and those presenting go ahead and come up to the podium as we get the presentation queued up.
And I love to see that our graduates are doing great things. It's really nice to see. And he's a very smart young man. His name is Dalton Valet. And if you come across him, you will enjoy his conversations. So now let's move on to our first information item, which is the back-to-school update.
It'll work not. It's going to be worth the wait. It's a great, it's a great presentation. It's actually a tradition that I hope to start in our district that as we begin the start to the school year to celebrate all of the work that's happened over the course of the summer to get us started and also to recognize any challenges we may have had and being honest and transparent about that with our community, with the board. And so lots of excellent things have happened this summer. You're going to hear from some fantastic folks who have really just went above and beyond to get us ready for the 31,000 kids we have the honor to serve. In education, they call this wait time. Can I back up? Yep, very good. So I'm a former math teacher and certainly have an affinity for numbers. And coming into this wonderful district, there's some big numbers that I want to highlight today to just kind of describe for the public and the board and certainly staff knows of some of the really impressive things that we're able to do as an organization. Every day, we serve 31,000 students across our district. And we do that with dedicated teachers, dedicated principals, support staffs, a dedicated administrative team. It's honored to serve those 31,000 students. We have 4,300 employees, making us the second-largest employer in Boulder County, next to CU. And each and every day, every one of them comes with the best of intentions and works as hard as they can to serve our kids. 57 schools. 57 schools that will be shiny and ready to go due to the great work of our teams as we enter tomorrow. This year, our bus travels will drive 2.4 million miles. If you start to think about how long that is, that's, I mean, I drove 1,500 miles this summer. I promise you, 2.4 million is certainly impressive. And we have the honor to serve over 500 square miles here in Boulder Valley Schools. And every day, we serve over 1.9 million meals to all different types of kids and making sure that they have the right nutrition and that they're fed. And it's just truly amazing when I start to think about the numbers of what we accomplish during a year and what we accomplish each and every day. And so I've asked members of our team here today to come. They'll introduce themselves. I'm going to give the board and the public a brief overview on some of the things we've done to get ready, including academics, some of our hirings, nutrition, transportation, maintenance, safety, security, bond projects. I think IT is in there whether they're not in this slide. And then talk a little bit about our BVSD Help Center, and then we'll open up to any questions the board might have. So with that, I'll turn it over to Sam Essia.
Good evening. So Sam Essia, Assistant Superintendent for Instructional Services and Equity. And as you remember, last year, you approved new reading materials for our elementary schools. So this year, this summer, it was incredibly exciting to receive those materials, get those delivered to the schools, have those available to the teachers, and to be able to start the professional learning on those. So most recently, last week on Friday, we did training for all of our kindergarten teachers on Wilson Foundations. We did training for all of our first, second, and third grade teachers at our monolingual schools on Fawness and Pennell Classroom. And at our bilingual schools, we did some really great training on the Ready Gen Bilingual Pathways Program, which is a program intentionally designed for bilingual programs. We've also had quite a lot of professional development going on over the summer. So thanks to our fantastic HR team, we had some really good training for our new administrators, 20 new administrators that we joined our district this year, 161 new teachers that went through new teacher orientation. Last week, we had professional learning for every single one of our PK through 12 teachers. And we had a conference on educational innovation called Innovate at BVSD. And we want to share with you some highlights from that.
As summer break winds to an end, a new school year is dawning. And so are opportunities for Boulder Valley educators to try something new.
So we are exploring an Innovate BVSD with a dash and dot. It's my first exploration with it, so I took the challenge of finding a, see if I can get him through this maze here.
Because Innovate at BVSD has held the four classes began.
Here's where you can control your speed that you're going.
Teachers have the time and energy to really explore new ways of teaching and new tools.
So much is coming at us, technology-wise as teachers, that it's hard to keep up with all of it.
It doesn't mean that there won't be hurdles or headaches along the way.
Yeah. Hold on, he's not moving, but it's going through technical difficulties. Because that's the most frustrating part, and when I'm not familiar with it, I'm like, mm, I don't know, guys, let's try it out.
But now they're equipped to conquer tech challenges.
So now at least I'll have a few ideas.
And fail forward with their students.
So I'm going to try it.
This hands-on experience now has these educators dreaming of the possibilities of what they can do in the classroom this fall.
So how cool would it be for them to create their own map of a country that we're studying? And then along the way, they stop at the Leaning Tower of Pisa and he says the facts about the Leaning Tower of Pisa. Like, how cool and engaging would that be for the kids?
And sharing those thoughts and collaborating with their colleagues.
I created some challenges for mixed ability groups.
And to inspire someone else who might be hesitant or is a little bit nervous about possibly doing this change. Well, if my colleague did it, I can do it. So that is really empowering and exciting for everybody.
While Innovate at BVSD is similar to other educational conferences.
This is really a high-quality conference experience that we provide with amazing keynote speakers.
It is a far cheaper and more convenient option, allowing more teachers from BVSD and other Colorado school districts to participate.
So this mountain camp, for example.
And by hosting it locally, our educators get an opportunity to share firsthand what worked and didn't work.
Ooh, I got one!
In their Boulder Valley classroom.
Because we really want to provide teachers with an opportunity to showcase their own learning and provide professional development for other teachers in the district.
I love every single time I come to a conference like this and I'm learning from coworkers, I always take away something that I get to try immediately in my classroom.
The result? Well, at the conference, you can actually hear all about that.
So our plan was to write them and edit one original song.
Directly from students.
I hope other kids get to have this experience because it is an amazing tool.
In the hallway, students participated in a showcase.
It's basically a siege machine.
Sharing all the learning that happened after their teacher-employed techniques learned at Innovate.
In our geometry unit, we got to get our own classroom.
You can see the window and like all the plants and the shelves and it's all about the students.
It's awesome that they're here and able to participate.
So on this beautiful summer day, only days before school begins, our teachers are already focused on students.
I think it's really cool that they take time out of the summer to come and.
Starting the year on the right foot.
It's a great way to kick off the year.
So there you go. Mike Rato, Assistant Superintendent for Human Resources. As you can see on the graph, you can't, there it is. You can see on the graph, we've hired 163 new passionate, wonderful teachers this year. We're about 100, we're two more than we did last year this time. It was 161. The good news about this too, in terms of our equity goal, we're up by almost 10% in people of color. So we're really excited about that, along with administrators. And what's interesting about the classified staff, support staff, last year, we hired 234 classified people. Tells you a little bit about retention because this year, we've only hired 45. Okay, so that gives you a little indication of what the retention rate that we're having, but we still have some ways to go. We still have some openings in the support staff. We have about six or seven openings and teachers are not full-time, maybe one full-time teacher, but we're on that right now as I speak. We're actually doing some offers tonight, so thank you.
My name is Margaret Crespo and I am the Assistant Superintendent of Secondary and so excited to be here. It's been an incredible month and just very grateful for the opportunity.
And I'm Robin Fernandez, the Assistant Superintendent for Elementary School Leadership. And we are so excited that finally, kids will be in our schools tomorrow. And our leaders are equally enthusiastic and ready for their arrival. They have spent quite a significant amount of time collaborating with each other, but also collaborating with their staffs and communities in preparation for tomorrow. Part of that process has been to welcome our new leaders, many of whom are here with us this evening. And so if you would stand as we introduce you to be recognized, we would appreciate that. First, Tanner Dayhoff, who is the principal at Bear Creek Elementary. Dr. Jeff Sanford, the interim principal at Cole Elementary. Nick Vanderpoel, the principal at Foothill Elementary. And Cameo Ronaldo Dade Muneza, the principal at Ryan Elementary. And for Platt Middle School, I would like to introduce Roy Holloway. And for Southern Hills Middle School, I would like to introduce John White. So many of our principals also are doing evening events as they're getting ready for school tomorrow. And we also have a number of new district leaders that are not available this evening because they're also getting ready. So I'd like to take a minute and introduce some of them. First, I'd like to introduce Assistant Superintendent of Elementary, Robin Fernandez.
Thank you very much.
Our new Director of Elementary Schools, Nativity Miller. Our Director of Career and Technical Ed, Arlie Huffman. And our Director of Health Services, Stephanie Farren. And in return, I would like to introduce our Assistant Superintendent for Secondary School Leadership, Margaret Crespo. Our Director of Maintenance, Molly McLaughlin. Our Interim Director of Math and Computer Science, Jennifer Corb. Our Director for Student Services, Mike Low. And finally, our Director of Supply Chain Management, Ryan Harder.
Hi, excuse me, I'm Ann Cooper, Director of Food Services, and I'm excited to say that this is the 10th year anniversary of the school food project. So I can hardly believe we've been doing this for 10 years, so thank you for all your support, that we've been able to have such an amazing food program that the board and everyone has supported. This week, we're expecting to do about 12,000 meals a day, but within a few weeks, we'll be up to 14,000 meals a day, probably go a little further than that. We've got about a dozen new menu items. We just printed all our calendars and I realize I neglected to bring them to you guys, but I will get them to you. We're working with about a dozen farmers this year. Last year, we bought about 160,000 pounds of local beef and chicken and about 80,000 pounds of local produce. And we're opening the school year with local zucchini, squash, green and purple peppers, cucumbers, peaches, and pears. We just had our staff training where we had our 170, 580 people and we took them all to a farm. We went to Olin Farm in Longmont, so everyone got to go to the farm and pick green beans and really talk to the farmers and really think about what it is, the food is we do and how we get it onto kids' plates. And we also have done, started doing diversity training, which was really great. Sam came and talked to our staff and we had some parents come and talk to the staff. So we're really excited to start the school year and we start feeding kids tomorrow morning
Good evening. I'm Molly McLaughlin, the new Director of Maintenance, and I'm really excited to be in this role and wanted to share with you some of the things that maintenance has done this summer. We've completed about 3,000 work orders, enhanced athletic fields, front entrances, and playgrounds. We've completed over 60 projects in the school, which include electrical installs, boilers, intercom systems, hydrants, and small construction remodels. We've also completed a variety of preventative maintenance, changed filters and belts, oiled motors, clean coils, and clean fresh air pathways. We've also conducted a variety of safety inspections so that all of our life systems are working well and we're really confident for the start of school. So thank you.
Albert Samora, Director of Transportation. As we heard earlier, there's 31,000 students will be, we have approximately 10,000 transportation-eligible students. Out of those 10,000 students, about 6,500 will regularly ride. We're starting the year off with 188 routes, which is on track with what we do, we've been doing for about the last three years. The first full day of school, we'll transport 7,500 miles. We're, it's obviously a partial day. A typical day for transportation is 12,000 miles a day. And then as a side note, activity, and we do, we do about 200, between 200 and 220,000 miles in activity and athletic trips. So, thank you.
My name is Brendan Sullivan. I'm the Director of Safety and Security for the district. A couple of things that we've done this year is we hired an additional security services manager who will be assisting with training, crisis management, supporting our school leadership in any safety and security issues as well as site supervision. We've increased the FTE allocation to our campus monitors by two at the high school level. We've realigned our central security office staff to provide better coverage to the district 24 hours a day, seven days a week, 365 days a year. We've conducted active harmful event training at Bruford High School recently with staff, students, first responders. And we are also engaging with other county emergency managers to bring other exercises and training for our staff. We have a district-wide safety team. It's a cross-functional team and we've really refocused it to look at solutions for any concerns of safety within the district. We have a new dispatcher and workstation at our security center next door, which is, accommodates the greater need for security services that we're seeing in this district as well as during crisis management times as well. We've developed resources online surrounding parents, or for parents, surrounding safety, security, and also training for our staff online that's available around our policies and procedures regarding safety in the district. So thank you.
Hi, I'm Andrew Moore, I'm the CIO for the district. We've had a busy summer. We've set up over 5,000 Chromebooks for staff and students. We've updated the digital citizenship curriculum. I'll talk a little bit more about that later tonight. We completed the RFP for the company that's going to come in and do a security audit. So this is a security audit both on our network, the physical network, and a social audit as well. There'll be more on that to share with you as time goes on. We updated hundreds of lab devices to ensure that they have the latest version of Windows 10 and the latest security patches. We launched the student data privacy course that is required under the policy we adopted back in December. All staff has until December to complete that course. And then last, we've been working diligently alongside the bond team to ensure that technology is ready to go when those schools do open tomorrow. Thanks.
I am Rob Price, Assistant Superintendent of Operational Services. So, as you've been driving by, we've accomplished a great deal of work, and now, we are working on an air conditioning project here in the boardroom, so. We, they don't end. But anyway, 16 schools under construction this summer. We completed over $50 million between May and end of July. So, we have done a lot. There is a lot of highlights out there, so I hope that everybody takes the time and goes through our new schools. Significant improvements at Centaurus, and Broomfield High School. Very proud of them. Those have been two projects that have been ongoing for two years, very disruptive. And the principals, the staff, the parents, everybody's been very supportive of us. So, thanks to Ginger, thanks to Principal Stensaroot out there, we've done great work. We've also completed new classrooms at Eldorado, that Dr. Anderson talked about. We've provided new early childhood opportunities at Cole, Fireside, BCSIS, and Eisenheier. And then, we've improved our athletic opportunities, so new gymnasium at Platt. We've also provided new tennis courts at Broomfield and Monarch High School. And then, we're functioning a lot better. As everybody knows, we're putting new roofs, new mechanical units, new lighting, et cetera. So, again, great work. Kaki is here, our bond team has worked extremely hard this summer. So, but with that, we come, we have challenges. We, as I talked about, when you do $50 million of work in 11 weeks, we run into problems. And what did we run into this summer? We had a shortage of labor. We had a shortage of subcontractor, we had a shortage of inspectors, et cetera. We didn't make it on Eisenheier. So, our team will be debriefing over the next few weeks, figure out how we can make sure this doesn't happen again. We did get BCSIS open, High Peaks and Cole. And they're not perfect, and I'm not very proud of them, but they're safe, they're clean, they're functional, and the principals have been great leaders. So, parents and students and staff, very encouraging. So, all I can say is, thanks to the community. We'll get it right, we'll continue to work, but we're very proud of what the team accomplished this year. So, we'll continue to work on that. So, all three schools, what I talked about, BCSIS, Cole, and Eisenheier, or I should say, not Eisenheier, those three schools had modified reporting periods. So, they came in, they worked hard, they put in a lot of hours over the weekends getting their classrooms set up, so I'll say thanks to them. Eisenheier, we did delay. Originally, school's supposed to start tomorrow, the 15th. They will be coming back to school on the 20th. And again, we just have to thank the parents for being flexible. So, thank you.
Welcome back, everybody. Leslie Stafford, Chief Operating Officer. So, we're right in the middle of our Third Annual Help Center. We've done this, this is our third year in a row. The first year, we had 1,000 families. The second year, we had 1,000 families. Right now, we're at about 450. We help our families with new enrollments, online registration, the annual data update, which includes things like emergency contacts. We're also helping them fill out their free and reduced lunch applications. We have about seven temporary staff we've hired to help our EdCenter staff support this process. And we are open until Friday, so we expect to be pretty close to that 1,000 mark. Again, we think we're going to be pretty busy over the next few days.
And so, Board members, as you can see, we've been very busy. I want to thank the team once again. Just amazing work happening this summer, and happy to answer any questions that the Board might have on our presentation.
Okay, thank you so much. Board members, questions, comments? Sam?
Just a note of thanks to all of you for your leadership. It's a presentation like this that gives us a sense of all the moving parts that have to come together to educate our kids, so thank you all very much. It's great to see you, probably see you all again at future Board meetings, hopefully not too often. But, you know, I'm just grateful for the team leaders we've assembled here. And principals, thank you so much for being here. I know you're super busy. When people ask me what I've learned, being on the school board, one of the key things I've learned is the importance of your leadership in your buildings. You would think I would have known that as a parent, but it's really, my appreciation has deepened greatly in my time on the Board. So, thank you so much. Needless to say, we're all counting on you, and we appreciate you. Mike, I did have a question about that retention rate for classified staff. That went, I mean, the retention rate seems to have increased dramatically.
Yes, sir.
Do you know why? Are we paying better? I mean, it's a low unemployment economy, or what's going on? That's good news.
Yeah, I think part of it is salary, but I think part of it is also the benefits piece of it. There's a lot of perks that Boulder Valley offers that other districts do not. I think, I think another thing is, employees feel happy when they work together here. We've done a survey, actually, last year with our classified staff. One of the big things that they noted was that they love working in teams, and they like working with who they work with. That says a lot. It's not so much the pay, it's the environment of the climate of where they work is really critical, especially in this day and age with a shortage of labor. So, it's significant. I couldn't believe that number myself, checked it several times. But yeah, it's true.
Great, thank you. And congratulations, Ann, on the 10 years of the School Food Project. That's a, that's a great, a great thing we're doing in our district, and thank you for your leadership on that.
Any other comments, Donna?
I'm just amazed at everything it takes to keep us all up and running. A few little household projects I had this summer, that got delayed because the people couldn't make it, or they're still on hold. And, and you, thanks, Rob, it's all up and going. And the food that comes in is delicious. I loved the blueberry cobbler tonight. And Sam, the reading program, just is excellent. It's, we're moving forward, I'm happy about that. And transportation, I'm amazed at how many kids, the buses I see going by each day. So, all of you, thank you.
Any other comments? All right.
I just want to thank all of you for the great work that you're doing. It's amazing how much gets done in such little short time. I do have a question for, for the Third Annual BVSD Health Center. The seven bilingual temp workers support EdCenter staff. Is that a result of a number of other language speakers coming to seek support from the?
It's mostly Spanish.
Mostly Spanish.
So, we do have some Spanish speakers. We're lucky enough to have a little help from all the departments. And if you have a chance to come by next week, we're all set up down in the PDC. And a few staff members are permanently housed in the Help Center for a couple of weeks, but it's not enough to help the number of families who come in. And so, we don't want there to be a bottleneck, and we don't want families to have to wait so too long. So, we hire some extra support to help them get through the process.
And do you have a little flavor, in terms of what are some of the main things that they're seeking support with?
Yes, a lot of things they come in for are passwords for Infinite Campus. Many of them have never had to use Infinite Campus before, and that's kind of the gateway to everything. And so, we help them with that. We help them with access into free and reduced lunch applications, and how to work through that. And sometimes, it's paperwork, documents that we need to scan. We have scanners down there. Andrew's team has helped us with document scanners. And so, schools try and help them, if they can, at the site, but otherwise, we help them out here.
Thank you very much. And I know that all of you are doing amazing work. And the work that you're doing with the, with the diversity training, in the, for your food service staff. Can you talk a little bit about that, just?
Yeah, this diversity training actually came from a group of Hispanic parents that have, their organization is called El Paso, which is an acronym, and I don't know exactly all the words that go into that.
It's Engaged Latino Parents Advancing Student Outcomes.
Thank you so much. Great, so there you go. So, these parents came and originally talked to Cindy, the former superintendent. And then, after they talked to her, then Wesley and I met with her, and kind of talked to, talked about what they said. And then, I met with them, and we all talked a lot about their things they needed, and the things they wanted, and, you know, how they felt like their kids were being treated maybe not equitably, or the perception was maybe not equitably. So, that really got me thinking about, well, how can we do it better? So, I invited these moms, or five of them, to come and speak to my entire team. And we did simulcast, so they were talking, and we were translating, and it was really powerful. And then, Sam spoke, and she talked a little bit about diversity, and implicit bias. And my, no one on my entire team had actually heard the term before, except maybe a couple of the managers. So, that was really great. And then, I ended it with really talking about some of my experiences, and I thanked the parents. And so, then we had them translate back from English to Spanish, and really talk to them about, you know, how much we really wanted to be able to make their children feel absolutely included, and absolutely taken care of, and nurtured, and so, you know, it's a step. I'm not saying that we're done. I think it was the very first step in our diversity training. And we, when we do more professional development, we'll have more of that as well.
Thank you very much. I certainly appreciate your efforts on that. And I also want to say that the five parents that went to that particular training, they were certainly appreciative in terms of the reception that you gave them, the understanding that you gave them. And they just wanted me to tell you, thank you very much for that.
Very sweet, thank you.
Then, the other, the other thing, for, for HR, sorry. The, the, the numbers of people of color that you've hired in the district this year, can you give me percentages in terms of teachers, principals, and your central staff?
So, this year, in the Latinos, we've hired 28, which is about 17.18%. Last year, it was 11.18%. With the same total number, I mean, off by a couple of teachers, but same total numbers. For administrative staff, we are, Latinos were 25%. Now, and then, last year, it was a little, actually, it was like 21%. So, we went up a little bit there, okay? In terms of American Indian, 0.61%. Asian, 1.23%. African-American, 1.23%. That's this, this year new. Last year, for teachers, American Indian were 1.24%. Asian, 1.24%, and African-American, 1.34%. So, we're going up a little bit, and we are doing some things around the recruiting efforts. We need to do more, and we're trying to figure out exactly where we need to go, and how we need to do that. And we're hoping that, obviously, we can grow our own as well. And I think we've had that conversation.
Well, thank you for your efforts, and I just want to say, congratulations. It's, it's something that I personally have been asking the district to think about and do, in terms of hiring more people of color that have the talent to work in this particular district. Thank you so much. I have one more quick question before you go, but I want to make sure that I'm not overstepping here, because I don't know. On the, on the agenda, we do have the, the, on the consent agenda, we have the personal action line item. And one of the things that I did see were a lot of interim principals. Can you explain that just a little bit?
I'll let the supervisors that hire them, so talk about that.
Good evening. So, I'll jump in. Very often, at this time of year, we want to make sure we have the absolute best candidate, who has the understanding of where we're going, where that school is, what that looks like. And oftentimes, that time that it takes to go through the hiring process and go through that system, really, we don't want it to impact children negatively by having that constant transition. We have incredibly qualified people internally that we can move into those positions, and give them the opportunity for leadership, while we're making the decisions about what happens, so that the students aren't impacted as we go through the process.
Another part of the process is timing. At Cole Elementary, for example, we have an interim principal. And that is because, in the month of June, the former principal, Mike Low, took a new position as Director of Student Support Services here at the EdCenter. So, we always have the intention and the necessity to bring together a community, both of staff, and of parents, and greater community members, into the principal hiring process, both in order to get information from them at the beginning of the process, about what are the necessary characteristics unique to their school, and unique to their communities, that we would need to look for as we engage in the principal search process. And in the summertime, it is nearly impossible to bring together a sizable group of people in order to engage both in that listening process, but also in the actual hiring and interviewing process. So, when we have leaders that transition in the months of May, June, July, August, as does periodically occur, we always put an interim, or very often, put an interim principal into those positions, until the hiring season begins again in January or February, and then, we're able to engage the entire community in that hiring process.
One more, one more thing to consider is, is the timing of it. The hiring season is already passed. So, therefore, it's very difficult to find candidates in other districts who may want to come over. And one of the understandings we have with our neighboring districts is that we don't, we don't steal someone in the, right at the beginning of the year, because that puts a real hard, hard case on them as well. And we expect the same from them. So, that's also, just being a good neighbor. So, that's why it's interim, and it's temporary in that sense.
Well, thank you for the, for the answer. I did see some of those names, and I just want to say that I do recognize some of those people, and I know they're excellent people, and they're going to do a great job. Thank you so much.
Okay, is that it? All right, with that, Board members, do you need a break now, or would you like me to go through with the consent? Consent grouping, great. Okay, you could maybe take a break while I read the consent items. Okay, 7.1 Personnel Items, 7.2 Approval of Minutes, June 12, 2018. 7.3 Acceptance of Donation, Whittier Elementary. 7.4 Approval of Family Resource Schools Contract for Intergovernmental Service Agreement Between BVSD and the City of Boulder. 7.5 Approve of the Architectural Design and Engineering Services Contract for Bond-Funded Improvement Work at Angevine Middle School. 7.6 Approval of the Architectural Design and Engineering Services Contract for Bond-Funded Improvement Work at Cole Creek Elementary School. 7.7 Approval of the Architectural Design and Engineering Services Contract for Bond-Funded Improvement Work at Heatherwood Elementary School. 7.8 Approval of the Architectural Design and Engineering Services Contract for Bond-Funded Improvement Work at Lafayette Elementary School. 7.9 Approval of the Architectural Design and Engineering Services Contract for Bond-Funded Improvement Work at Lewisville Elementary School. 7.10 Approval of the Architectural Design and Engineering Services Contract for Bond-Funded Improvement Work at Mesa Elementary School. 7.11 Approval of the Architectural Design and Engineering Services Contract for Bond-Funded Improvement Work at Superior Elementary School. 7.13 CDE ESEA General Assurances Grants. 7.14 Change Order for Additional Construction Items at Platt Middle School. 7.15 Change Order for Asbestos Abatement at Centennial Middle School. 7.16 Change Order for Asbestos Abatement at Platt Middle School. 7.17 Change Order to HSS Inc. for Bond-Funded Work at Monarch High School. 7.18 Chromebook Proposal Staff. 7.19 Closeout to the Construction Manager/General Contractor Contract for Bond-Funded Work at Community Montessori School. 7.20 Mental Health Partners Contract, 2018, 2019. 7.21 Out of District Contract. 7.22 Petroleum Purchase and Delivery. 7.23 Purchase of Microsoft Software Licenses Renewal, 2018, 19. 7.24 Sale of Goods to the District by Employees. 7.25 Grant Boulder Tech Construction Trades Equipment, Lowe's Foundation, 18. 7.26 Grant Instructional Services and Equity Consolidated Federal Programs, Titles 1A, 2A, 3A, and 4. Colorado Department of Education, 18. 7.27 Grant Instructional Services and Equity Personalized Learning Project, Colorado Education Initiative, 18. 7.28 Grant Justice High School Expelled and At-Risk Students, EARS-S, Colorado Department of Education, 18. 7.29 Grant Secondary School Leadership, Carl Perkins Vocational Technical Program, Colorado Community Colleges, 2018. 7.30 Grant Whittier Elementary School Health and Wellness, City of Boulder Health Equity Fund, 18. So, are there any items Board members would like to pull from consent grouping? Okay, hearing none. Any, before we begin discussion, do we, can we get a motion to approve? Second, okay. And is there any discussion or questions on the items? Okay, hearing none. Laura, could you please call the roll?
Benford. Fuqua.
Yes.
Garcia.
Yes.
Gebhardt.
Yes.
Marquess.
Yes.
Myers.
Yes.
Sergeant.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, great. So, now, let's move on to our action items. So, we have two action items, 8.2 and 8.3, concerning Policies GBEE and Policy JS. Rob, do you want to kick us off on this, or?
Certainly, I'd ask Andrew Moore, our Chief Information Officer, to go ahead and head to the podium to speak to both items. So, the last board meeting, I wasn't here, but I watched it on TV. And so, know that it was, it was the hope of the Board to bring these items for action tonight, and for discussion.
and, and for discussion, and I'm going to turn this over to Andrew to talk a little bit about where we are with these and...
Wonderful. There you go. Thank you, President Marquez, board members, Dr. Anderson. I'm back in front of you tonight for the action portion of both Policies GBEE and JS. GBEE is the Employee Technology and Communications Policy. JS is the same for students. When we left last June, seems like that was a while ago, when we left, there was a lot of discussion about additional things possibly to go into here, and we talked about a timeline. I'm going to bring up a timeline that, we'll hit the screen here in just a second, that I've created based on that conversation. Basically, regardless of whether you approve or don't approve tonight, this would be the next steps, and that was to develop a parent survey. We spoke about that in June. We are now starting to develop that. We'll work with Jonathan Dings and his organization to ensure that the survey yields valid results, results that we can all look at and say, okay, these were, covered our district. They had the right participants. The questions were asked in a non-biased way. We would take those questions to you. You would request to review the questions before it actually went out. We would do that at the September 25th board meeting or sometime right before then. From there, we would send out the survey. It would be out, we're thinking somewhere around two to three weeks so that there's ample time for parents to respond to it. We purposely are not wanting to send it out early now because families are going back to school. It's a little chaotic for everyone, so this timeframe is after September, right when things are settling a bit. From there, we would share the survey results with DAC and with DTAC for them to understand the results and for us to start to develop proposals to discuss with you, which, if this timeline were to hold, would be on November 27th in a work session to develop whatever other updates you would like in these policies. And then the board approval takes two meetings, so that is likely to happen in the December-January timeframe. So, with that, I will turn it back to you to just answer any questions that you may have, either on the timeline or either of the policies.
Could you just speak to the two long arrow items that they...
Yes, thank you for pointing that out. So, there's two other things that we want to do parallel with this timeline. The first one is to develop a more family-friendly technology opt-out language. There is opt-out language right now in JS, but I think most would agree that it is not as overt as it needs to be, and we think we could do better. And so, we would have that ready for your consideration as well. The second thing is that this summer, we've been working on our digital citizenship curriculum. We've had the curriculum, but it hasn't always been that easy to determine what should you be teaching at what grade level. It wasn't always easy for parents to find what they needed. All of that has been updated on our website. It's easier to get to. We have the scaffolding in place, and we've, at Rob's, Rob has asked Sam and myself to add this to his 100-day plan so that we have a plan on how we're going to integrate the digital citizenship in a more comprehensive way throughout all of our grade levels.
Okay, so, so that was a great way to, I think, start this discussion, and the first policy is GBEE, so do you want to update us a little bit on that since it has been?
Yeah, so, in June, we went through the changes. I wasn't planning to go on, through all these bullet point by bullet point, but the things that are in GBEE and JS that are the same is that we've clarified the language to be more broad. So, when we say "technology," it covers all technology as opposed to specific things that are written in policy today. We have been more specific that if anyone, whether you're a student or staff, if you see inappropriate material, it needs to be reported so that we can actually do something about it. There are things to, for security reasons, to block using memory sticks and to also give us the, the authority to basically funnel all of our student data into the Google Drive environment, Google Apps for Education, and away from things like Box and Dropbox where we have no ability to get into personal accounts where we know there is some data, BVSD data stored in those, those facilities. Hotspots also are on both the staff and the, the student policies to basically put them in policy that you're not allowed to use hotspots unless there's a declared emergency, and then you can. There are some other things that are in GBEE, but they're more procedural. How long we can retain email, how long before we delete accounts. None of that has changed. Everything that's in front of you tonight is what was shared in detail at that June meeting.
On the decryption technology, is that something, I was reading it, I think it was in JS, is that something you would put on somebody's phone? Or is it something that would be done in the cloud or elsewhere?
Yeah, the decryption technology is available to us in our firewall. So, data, whenever you go to a website, if it says HTTPS, that means it's encrypted. So, if you were able to see the traffic on the network, you would not be able to, to see what was in there. The decryption capability is built into the firewall, and we do not have it turned on now, and we would only turn it on at the direction of the police, the superintendent. So, it's not, it's not anything we're planning to proactively do, but we want it at our disposal if we do need it. If you want, I could talk just briefly about JS too.
Sure, go ahead.
Okay, so, in JS, there's really only three things that are different in JS than GBEE. We've taken out language today that was duplicative of federal law. We've simplified it in our policy to refer to the federal law, so that just simplifies it. We also explicitly say now in the student policy that attacking, destroying, disrupting any district technology or data is explicitly prohibited. So, in policy, it makes it really clear that if you're doing something that is disrupted, destroying, could be data, could be our networks, that this is, this is very clear not to be doing that. And then we do have the language from the current student handbook with regard to cell phones now just embedded in the policy. That language says cell phones are to be off unless an administrator, teacher, principal says it's okay for them to be on.
So, can I ask my question on JS? It said something about that students would receive education about online communications, I think it was, and I was just curious who's providing that? Is that something created in district or is this something that exists elsewhere?
I'm not recalling that particular statement for the student policy. In GBEE, it does say that social media, you're no longer to use your personal social media accounts, but you can set up a BVSD professional social media account.
Yeah, this was, here, let me find it. It was in here because I read it. Nope, that's the acknowledging. Let somebody else ask a question.
Okay.
Well, she's looking for that question. On the, let's see, what am I at here? On the acknowledgement regarding use of technology where you have parents needing to sign yes or no, and if, if they sign no, they can't access anything, it sounds like.
That's right. So, this is where we think we could do a better job on the opting out. But you're, you're exactly right that if you don't sign the form, then, you know, technology would not be enabled for that student.
And, and if we look percentage-wise in terms of instruction and the use of technology is pretty, probably pretty high.
Yeah, I am not aware of anyone that has fully opted out of technology. I am aware of one particular case where they've opted out of some of the assessment programs that are done at the kindergarten, first grade level. We, we did have three parents that opted out of Wanda Web in Broome Field, but they later came back and purchased the Chromebooks, and I'm not aware of any opt-outs now at that school.
So, if a parent does opt out, let's say, then the, the percentage of the instruction that goes on in the classroom, how much would that kid lose if he's not using technology?
That's a great question. I'm going to defer to Dr. Anderson.
And, and I think that this is, this is where we have an opportunity and certainly have a process in looking at what an opt-out process might look like. So, we would be able to honor a family's values if they felt like that this is something that they wanted to do, but also maintain instruction and, and do that in a way where teachers are able to do that with the rights, right amounts of supports. But as, as we've looked at this, we feel like this is an opportunity, and so that's why we've had that on the timeline. So, we would hope over the course of the next several months, we'd be able to bring something back to the board.
And then, when you look at the parent survey, is something related to this on the parent survey?
I think the questions will be broad about the usage of technology, expectations of parents. The things that are in these policies now are pretty, I don't want to say basic, but they're, they're things that we just need to do to modernize. We have not updated these policies for six years. But the, I think there may be additional input from the parents that we would gain from that survey that could guide us on what additional things could be put in here. There was some discussion last month, for example, on the cellphone policy. Could that be a little more granular? Could it, and, and I think we need to be informed by our parent community.
So, yeah, I'm just concerned in terms of the burden that will place on teachers if, in fact, the parent opts out and they have, you know, if they're using technology a lot in their classroom, and yet, these kids can't use technology for whatever reason the parent doesn't allow it. What kind of burden is that teacher going to have then in terms of trying to supplement or whatever she need or he needs to do to make sure that that child gets educated?
I think that's part of the conversation.
Yeah, I would say that it's something we'd have to be very sensitive to and work with teachers and, and understand, you know, what would be reasonable and how we would make that work, and so that would be part of the process.
I found it.
Okay.
Okay, it's under safety in JS. "In the interest of student safety, the district must educate students and parents about appropriate online behavior, including cyberbullying awareness and response and interacting on social network sites with chat and other forms of electronic communication." So, I just wondered, what does that, you know, education look like and who's making it up?
Who's delivering it? So, that is the digital citizenship curriculum that we're talking about. And what we're now having the 100-day plan is to spell that out more clearly by grade level, how that gets educated or in, in the, the flow of the education of our, of the students. It is happening all over the district now, from teacher librarians to teachers that integrated in their, their everyday teaching. But I can't say definitively that it's happening in every situation that it needs to happen in. And so, that'll be part of this 100-day plan update.
Do we need to discuss quickly what our timeline, so, do we want to pass these policies tonight or does it not make a difference?
I would encourage you to pass both of these because it updates the language for, for safety and security, and it does no real harm to, other than, when I say no harm, there's nothing in here that I think philosophically I've heard any of you not support. I've heard there are additional things you might want to get in here, but I don't think there's anything in here that I've heard that you guys are not supportive of.
So, okay, so I guess we'll go in the order here. So, maybe we should start with 8.2? Oh, yeah, I didn't see that your hand was up. I'm sorry.
So, a couple of questions, Andrew.
Yeah, sure.
For the parent survey, are we getting input from some of the concerned parents that we heard from the spring and the summer into those questions?
Yeah, great question. I am, I have a copy of the survey that they are actually, I think, going to be putting out on their own, and so, I'll definitely work with Jonathan Dings, and we'll look at those to help us inform as well.
Okay, I didn't know. They're, they're planning on doing their own separate survey?
It was forwarded to me, I think it was last week.
Okay, good. I think that's a good idea to look at that. So, I didn't quite follow your timeline. So, in September, we would approve the survey? That what you said?
Yeah, the questions would come to you at the Sep, prior to the September 25th board meeting, and I would look to Dr. Anderson whether we're looking for you to approve or just to be aware so when it goes out, but, but you would have them at that time.
You know, I, I think we can have a conversation. My, my concern would be validity and reliability on any type of instrument that we're going to use to give information for the, to the board to make decisions, and so that's why we've cued Jonathan to help with that, to making sure that the questions and the way we ask the questions and how we do that follows the right methodology to, to give us valid and reliable information.
Yeah, I was, I mean, that's one of the reasons I was asking. I don't, I don't think we need to approve the survey. We just need to make sure that it's asking the right kinds of questions, right? Which you're giving us the opportunity to do, right? So, that's good. And then, so, I wasn't following. Then you, we're going to share it with DAC and DTAC in November, and then the December timeframe, you mentioned board approval, but I'm not sure board approval of what?
Yeah, so there's one step that I probably went a little too quickly there. It would be in October, end of October, November, that we would share with DTAC and DAC, and that would help us have a sounding board for the results that we have to start formulating potential options for, for you as a board to consider. That would then come to you on November 27th at a work session. From the work session, I would look to you as a board to direct what you would like added to JS. We would then bring that back in December, but since December only has one meeting, or typically only has one meeting, it takes two meetings to pass board policy, so it's likely that it would roll over into January for the actual approval.
Okay, thanks. So, I, I don't think, Rob, that it was really the hope of the full board that we bring this back to action, the very first meeting that we have in the fall. I think that it was the hope of at least some of the board that we continue to get parent input, given the way we left it in June with quite a few opinions about various aspects of this policy. So, given that we're not really comfortable with the opt-out language, not really comfortable with the cellphone language, I'm not comfortable with a few other things that are in there which I emailed to the board yesterday, I really don't see the hurry to put this in place. I think we ought to, given Andrew's timeline, just wait until November, talk about this in a work session and approve it in, in December or January, whenever the schedule allows us to do it. I don't, I, I don't, I wouldn't want to approve a policy that we don't feel is right, even if we only think it's temporary. I don't, I don't see the need to do that. So, I would recommend just postponing it until we're ready. And, and, and that would give us more time for community input too into the policy.
Other comments, board members? Or, do you actually, do you want to make a, a slam?
I was going to ask. Andrew, so, in terms of these policies, where are we vulnerable if we don't act tonight?
Well, I think we're vulnerable in the sense of hotspots, although I imagine we could maybe go down a different path behaviorally if we did that. We're vulnerable on the threat vector of viruses coming in through memory sticks. We had a major incident in this district last November, and we're trying to prevent about things like that happen. I think there's a threat with student data privacy in that we know we have some employees that are storing student data in Box and Dropbox. Those are, those are systems that are not part of FERPA. They're not part of us having IDs and passwords. You know, those, those are big things. It's, we've been living under this policy for a long time, so on one hand, if nothing happens, then we're okay. But if something happens, it's a big consequence.
Well, yeah, so where I was going with that is wanting to appreciate Shelley's comments about taking the time and working through the timeline, but I also wonder if there's, either there's other places within our regulations and policies that can address that, or if there's something we do quickly for these particular vulnerabilities that Andrew just outlined while we spend the rest of the fall working through the policies.
Yeah, I share Sam's concerns that if there's something that we can prevent from happening that could be dangerous especially, you know, something off a memory stick or, you know, anything that's going to breach data, that we ought to put that in place now and then go forward with what do we want to add? How do we want to make it better? But it seems that this six-year-old policy is not adequate to address the problems that we might be having now. So, I don't have a problem with passing this with the idea that we're going to improve it and work on it.
The, the cellphone discussion, if I recall correctly, in June was one of the main ones. The cellphone language in here does not change in any way what we already have in the student handbook. So, by putting it in policy, you're not going to harm anything or make things worse, but it will be in policy, which is just codifying what we already have. And then we can work on that language over the fall.
So, isn't it true, Rob, that we could just put language about hotspots, memory sticks, and things like that also in the student manual and remind principals to... and things like that also in the student manual and remind principals to remind students and staff about the proper use or not use of those things while we take the time to work out the policy?
I would say that's true for students, that certainly principals and schools have the authority to limit access to hotspots and set rules and regulations within their schools. It doesn't put it in policy, but I do think that there's practice that can prevent that. But in regards to staff, I don't believe that is the case. And so as we think about the questions that the board would have around safety and security, I can say that after reading through QBEE, there are items in that policy that do tighten security measures for the district. And with the breach, and Andrew shared that with me, and as our CIO is entrusted with our safety in regards to those areas, that does tighten things up, certainly on the staff side.
Students can also be bringing in memory sticks. And the way viruses work is you plug those into a machine, and if the virus is in there, the machine reads that memory stick and away it goes. So I know a policy isn't necessarily going to stop some malicious student from doing something, but it certainly is a step in the right direction where we can communicate.
Andrew, students don't read our policies. So they just don't. I mean, the instruction to do or not do things comes from principals and teachers and administrators. So I don't see why administration can't tell teachers not to use memory sticks or do the kinds of things that have created the problems you're discussing. Policy's not going to stop any of that.
I mean, I think that's an interesting point of how much of this even belongs in policy.
Yeah.
You know, a lot of this can be done in administration. But that being said, or in regulation. So if we have both the policy, we have the regulation. So there's some differences between the two because the JS policy is pretty broad. I think some of the issues are in the regulation, not in the policy. So that's another just point of difference that we might want to think about. And obviously, regulation is developed by staff, and we just get those as information items. We actually don't vote on that. We can call it to a vote, but in general, we don't write regulations, right?
That's true.
So I just wanted to remind, you know, because these were all presented together. It was even a little confusing. I got a little confused about it. So in any case, I, well, I would like to move that we approve policy GBEE in 8.2. Okay, second by Kathy. And so is there more discussion about GBEE?
Yeah, I think that GBEE and JS are similar enough that some of the same issues apply to both of them. I don't think either one of them are ready for approval right now, and I don't see any reason to rush into that. Because like Andrew said, they're six years old now. There's nothing that we're going to put in those policies right now that's going to stop anything from happening that hasn't happened. I think we should just wait and do a write.
The reason why I support doing it now is that I do believe that some of the points that the staff has brought up seem like good ideas for me in the interim, to me in the interim and for our community and for internet safety. And I feel that I haven't heard as much about other changes to GBEE from the board at our last meeting, and I felt like we discussed it a lot in the spring. So for GB, I feel comfortable passing this and then going through the process to change it in three or four months. So, but, you know, if the board decides otherwise, I can live with it, too, because I think we'll be okay. So anyway. So can we call that to a vote if there's no more discussion?
The motion is to approve policy GBEE. Benford, I'm sorry. We've split it into two.
So we're at the vote? No.
Right.
I do not want to approve that policy. I don't think it's ready yet, and I don't know why we wouldn't wait three months to do that.
Fuqua.
Yes.
Garcia.
No.
Gebhardt.
Yes.
Marquess.
Yes.
Myers.
No.
Sargent.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, so let's move on to policy JS. Does anyone want to make a motion to have a discussion about JS? Go, Shelley.
I'd like to move that we postpone taking action on policy JS until we have more opportunity for public input and until we've revised the policy so that it's a permanent policy, not a temporary one.
So what do I, I, oh, I need, oh, so I, so I move that we approve policy JS.
I move that we postpone taking action on policy JS until we've had more opportunity for public input and until we're ready to make a permanent policy.
Okay, second by Sam. Okay, and do we go into discussion now, Laura? Okay, any further discussion on this? Okay, and do we vote on Shelley's motion first? Okay, do you want to call the role on Shelley's motion to postpone JS?
This is on the motion to postpone. Benford.
Yes.
Fuqua.
Yes.
Garcia.
Yes.
Gebhardt. Marquess.
Yes.
Myers. Sargent.
No.
Motion passes.
Motion passes. And do we need to do anything with the other motion at this point? Okay, great. Okay, so with that, we heard the timeline, and we'll be looking at both of these policies again, and also weighing in with DAC and giving DAC an opportunity to look into these. And I also hope that we can talk a little bit about, at some point, what's in policy and what's in regulation, and where the board's going to be involved in each of those two pieces.
All right. Just for clarification, you do want GBEE back, or is it about JS? I mean, the timeline I laid out was primarily about JS, the student policy. We could bring GBEE back. I'm just not sure the parents would be informing us on GBEE.
So, board members, my thought is if you have changes based on your feedback, to bring it back.
Got it. Okay, wonderful. Thank you.
Okay. So we next have a study item, which is a resolution in support of Amendment 73. This is a resolution that was provided by CASB. Rob, do you want to say, Dr. Anderson, do you want to talk anymore about this?
Yes, I'm asking Bill Sutter to come up, who's our expert, who's going to be able to fill us in on a little bit of the details. The reason that this is coming to you this evening is really around timing. And so for you to consider this, to make sure that we're relevant, if you do choose to pass a resolution, the timing was now. So I'll turn it over to Bill to add any more context, and he can be open for any questions we may have.
Good evening. There was a significant amount of reading attached to that agenda item, so I won't go through all of it. A couple of things I think to highlight. This is different from the resolution that was brought forward back in February. That resolution in February was around the proposed School Finance Act update, the Modernized School Finance Act that was brought forward, worked on by superintendents for, I think it was about three years in total. It did not make it out of the legislature at the time. There was some feeling, I think, to let this initiative process go through. So certainly, as the initiative process has gone through, the signature collection, getting it onto the ballot, that's been quite a long process, being involved with that. So at this point, some of the information that was attached, there's a projection estimation of what the revenue would be for the Boulder Valley School District relative to that. The projection's based on CDE estimates. This is a tricky thing to try to estimate because it is not tied to a nice calculated School Finance Act like the previous one was. But this is, at least based on the counts of special education students and gifted and talented students, there is some, while not a direct weighted student formula, it is allocating those resources towards particular student characteristics. So the number that has been estimated for the district is $48.7 million, which is a fairly significant dollar amount. And a couple of caveats with that, because this implements the opportunity for districts to count any and all kindergarten students as full-time students, this would fund full-day kindergarten. It does increase the opportunity for preschool funding at halftime. So there are some state laws that need to be updated to align with some of that, that I would imagine would come through in the next session if this were to pass. The proposal is a progressive tax increase, income tax increase. There are some adjustments to the residential and non-residential property tax assessment rate. So how an individual is affected by this is difficult to project overall for a district, especially a district that doesn't align nicely with county boundaries, where county might have more income tax information for people. So to know, like, how much money would be generated by the Boulder Valley School District and how much would be returned to the Boulder Valley School District is not really a question that can be answered all that well. There is a calculator that is being developed, an online calculator, that people can go and put in their information because it's based on, you know, what is your income and then what is your property value and how all those things would be affected. So that's coming out actually fairly soon, the next week or so, I believe. The resolution noted in the agenda item is the standard one that CASB put together. Certainly can be modified for any flavor that the Boulder Valley School District wanted to include in there. But it is what at least a number of school districts that I've heard about are working from. There's a couple of blanks in there right now around how much money, because again, this is generic for all school districts, and then what priorities, funding priorities, the board would have with those dollars. So it's a affirmative statement of, you know, support for the amendment and then what those resources could be used for. What I've heard is districts are generally speaking, being fairly broad in that. I think it would be a mistake to go down the path of being overly specific with items in there, other than something like full-day kindergarten because that's a requirement of it. If a student wants to go, if you provide it, you get funded for it. So certainly, what I included in the agenda item as well were the budget priorities that were adopted by the board for the 1819 school year, budget cycle. Those are certainly, I think, as we talked about them, they're fairly broad, although there is a little bit of specificity in there. So even those types of items, I think, are generic enough, and generic enough yet specific enough, to provide some clarity around what the district has been talking about and thinking about for quite some time with resources that just haven't been available. I'll stop there.
Thank you, Bill. This was a lot of information. Thank you for providing it. What questions do we want to start up? Again, this is on study, so we're not taking any action. Donna.
Okay, so you stated we'll get, and these papers do, $48.7 million in ongoing revenue. And so my question would be, will Boulder Valley taxpayers be paying in more than that?
So that's a number that is, I personally have no idea how to calculate it. We could probably contract with CU to do some econometric study around what that would be. But it's not a number that would be readily available, unlike property taxes. So when you say we're going to increase one mil for property taxes, we know what our total assessed value is, and that's a very easy calculation. Because this is very specific to an individual, we can't say that we're going to generate 50 million and only get 48 back, or we're going to generate 45 and get 48. It's not a number that is, that I know is either readily available or easily available.
Okay.
And this is a statewide question. I guess that's the other component of it, is this is not an individual school district question. It is the statewide issue.
You might have answered this already in your, I caught a glimpse of it, but if the local share for school funding out of property taxes is being reduced, is it guaranteed that the state equalization funding will be increased to cover that shortfall?
So the $1.6 billion that the amendment is targeted to generate is net of those changes in the assessment rate. So the non-residential dropping from 29 to 25, and the residential rate dropping from 7.2 to 7%. So that's a component of the question.
Okay.
So, Bill, when you said this is a statewide initiative, not a local one, I think we all realize that. But as was the case with Amendment 66, it was a statewide ballot, but it was going to mean a lot of money left Boulder Valley and went to Denver. And that was one of the concerns about that initiative. So I think maybe what Donna's trying to get to is, is this same thing going to happen here? Even though we're having a net gain, it's like, where's the gain coming from? Is it coming from us? Or is it coming from an actual increase in the pool of money that's being spread around?
So one component of it is corporate income tax. I believe it's C Corps are having a slight increase in the rate. So 400 million of the total, I think, is that. So that's a component that, I'm sure there's C Corps in Boulder that might pay more for that, but that's a statewide, again, a statewide thing. So that would go into the total pool that would be distributed out.
Remember, was that part of Amendment 66, too? Was there a C Corp increase, tax increase?
Amendment 66 was such a complicated mess, I don't think anybody would be able to even, like, work through what the nuances of it were. It did pass in Boulder, actually in Boulder County, and I think Denver as well. But it was a very different piece of legislation. It was not targeted at tax equity, that this one is stated to be working towards tax equity. And it also didn't include the restoration to all school districts of the negative factor. So that's one of the components of this, is this gets everybody up above that dollar amount. 66 did not.
And wasn't Amendment 66, I think the cap was combined income 75K and this one's 150K, is that correct?
I don't remember what that was. It was...
I thought that's what I read, but I can't find it here.
I think it's 92% of the population is not affected by the income tax portion of this statewide, in the statewide number. Certainly, the Boulder area, and Broomfield for that matter, has a higher median income than the rest of the state on average. So the likelihood that there could be more impacts is certainly there. But I think the median household income in Boulder County is something like 76,000. So if, that means we don't pay anything, right? No, it doesn't, because there's difference.
Other questions, Richard?
Yeah, I'm reading here, this is the Quality Public Education Fund, right? And the language that I'm reading here is to supplement the general fund that we currently have. So whatever we have in our general fund, this is added to that for these particular educational activities that they have outlined in there, correct?
So the concept is that this new money is supplement, not supplant, for the state.
For the state.
Right. So the state can't say, oh, yeah, you got 1.6 billion, we're going to get rid of some equal amount of what the general fund currently puts into K-12 education. So it is... So, it is, it has to be an increase overall. When the money comes to the district, there are no requirements around how those dollars are spent, other than something like full-day kindergarten, if you count a student, you have to provide that. But the, the idea being that, at least the conversations I've heard, that every district did something different during the economic downturn and the sustained shortfall and the negative factor, BS factor, that, that each district really should have the opportunity to decide how those, what should be put back, or what not, and what new, and those, all those questions really are the, the local decisions that need to have.
Anything else, Richard?
No, thanks.
Kathy?
I think what you just said, Bill, hits the nail on the head for where my concerns are. I think, given the conversations at the legislature about mill levy overrides and how we're one of the few districts that's capped out on the mill levy override, I would, and the legislature will be free to enact a new school finance formula if this passes, or even if it doesn't pass. So, there really isn't any guarantee about how much money would come to Boulder. I would think we'd get our negative factor, so I just get nervous about putting a number out there. I, I can see both sides of it. One is then you can argue that the legislature didn't give us what they, we thought we were going to get, but I also see, like, what happens with RTD when they promise us something and we don't get it, and we don't really have a whole lot of control over that. So, I get nervous around that, not so much the overall ballot measure, but talking about a big number coming into Boulder makes me a little anxious.
I would concur with that sentiment. I wouldn't go spending forty-eight point seven, or whatever the number was, until there was some determination through the School Finance Act process. The superintendent's proposal, I think the number was somewhere around forty. So, it was not as high because it removed the cost of living factor that is certainly an impact, a big impact to lots of districts. So, so yes, I wouldn't go out and spend that right now. That is the way the language is written, the calculation that would come to us. So, if the legislature couldn't change the School Finance Act because they couldn't get it through the process, then that's what would be in place. And again, we wouldn't know that until May fifth, or whatever the date is.
I just would find it hard to believe that if this passes, the legislature would just leave everything alone on school finance.
They can't. The amendment requires them to pass a lot.
Well, but, no, the amendment, if they don't, tells them what they have to spend some of it on. So, that's how I understand it.
I think they have to review it every five years or something like that.
Yeah. And it just goes to my earlier point, which is if we wanted, it's kind of a weird timing thing, but if we want to think ahead as to what a potential school finance formula might look like and how we would want to try to protect at least Boulder's interests, we might want to think about what those resolutions and what that language might look like going into the legislative session. So, it's just a, a thought. I know it's kind of premature, but it's certainly something we might want to think about.
So, we would be asking voters to pass this initiative without knowing what Boulder's going to get out of it? And how bad could it be in May?
Well, we would get some things, for sure. We'd get full-day kindergarten. I mean, there's certain buckets that the money has to go into, so we, you know, I, I think we know we would get that, but I think, Shelley, I think.
But we could do that on our own for four million dollars.
No, I know. There is no, to me, I'm a little cynical. I think there's no end to the mischief the legislature could create, but they might not. You just don't know. So, they've tried to make it as confined, but they also don't want to put, this is my understanding, too much in the Constitution, because we learned under Amendment twenty-three, you don't want to put too much in the Constitution because then you don't have flexibility. Is that a fair description?
Yes, there's, there's a little bit more in here, in some instant, well, this comes with money that twenty-three didn't, so there's one big component to it. But the supplement, not supplant, language, the allocation of some of the dollars, at least, so they flow towards particular groups of students. The, so the, the School Finance Act that was proposed, the Modernized School Finance Act last year, was distributing resources towards students with particular characteristics. There was some modification for district things that districts can't account for. But even with that, the number was pretty close to what this is. So, this is definitely a little higher than what that was, so this is a little more robust. So, again, I wouldn't go down that path initially. But I would say it would be pretty difficult for the legislature to go through a process and create a School Finance Act with this kind of money that doesn't distribute it in a way that Boulder gets at least all of its negative factor back and then some.
That's what I was going to say. It would be really hard for them to give everybody their negative factor back and not Boulder. I think it's that differential among of that that's, we just would have to fight for.
Right.
About thirty million, is that right, Bill? Negative factors like twenty-eight to thirty million?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Certainly, it was improved significantly this past year, but, or for this current year.
Okay, other questions, comments? So, what are our next steps with this? It's on study. And so, we're going to, are we going to bring this back?
I'll jump in.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think that, that we would bring this back to the board for consideration for action next month. Have we decided when we would bring that?
Then, two weeks.
Two weeks.
Yeah.
That would be what we propose.
Yeah. So, so certainly, we would need to plug in the blanks that are in the, in that resolution. And that can be part of the consideration, certainly is, you know, whatever we end up putting in there. Again, I think we'll keep them fairly broad and leave it essentially as it is, unless there's a significant feeling that some component of this language is not appropriate for Boulder, for whatever reason.
So, this is a resolution in support of. We don't have to do this. We can just have it be on the ballot and see what our voters think, right? I mean, there's, what are the, I mean, is there a pro or con to passing a resolution on this? For any reason?
I, first of all, I, I think I want to thank all those great people that worked on this particular amendment, because it's a lot of work. People did a lot of work in terms of trying to get it, at least to the Secretary of State and for it to be on the ballot. I think that a resolution would probably, well, in Boulder, probably would, Boulder will vote for affirmatively for education funding, usually anyway, if they did for Amendment sixty-three, or sixty, sixty-three. I'm sure they wouldn't have a problem voting for this one here, resolution or not. But I think what it would do is show the public that we are in support of increasing funding for public education in Colorado.
Back in, with Amendment sixty-six, we voted against it as a board, and Boulder supported it. So, I don't think it makes any difference.
True.
Well, I think it does make a difference, even if it doesn't, to our voters, because I don't think Boulder has ever met a tax it didn't like. But it makes a difference statewide to see what districts are adopting resolutions. And I think we can be a leader in that, because people do look to see what is Boulder doing. So, I would be in favor of passing a resolution in support of this.
Any other comments? So, we'll bring it back for action and see what happens. Okay.
I have a question. So, I'm not crazy about this resolution as it's written, so how would you like to see proposed language changes to it? Or how, how should we go forward with that?
Send them to Rob?
Send them to.
Yeah, I, I think that if there are concerns in, in regards to the resolution wording, what have you, you could send that to me, and I can work with Bill, and, and we can try to get something that, that when we bring back for action, that, that would, would try to meet the needs of the board.
For, for example, I just get angst over the language that reduced funding is impacting our ability to provide meaningful educational opportunities for all students, because I feel like in our budget that we have, we do that as best we can. So, there's just some language in there that, and as I said earlier, I'm not comfortable putting very many numbers in there. So, something way broader might be something I could support, but the way this is written, I'm not totally comfortable with it.
So, I have a question, and Kathy, I don't know if you were in, I mean, you must not have been involved in writing this because you didn't like it, but, but I mean, this came from Casby, right? Yeah, so, the, one of, one of the wherethes is the loss to the blank school district, which would be, has been over X number of dollars since oh nine, which could have been used to blank, blank, and blank. I'm not crazy about that. I mean, I, I'd be okay, I'm, I'd like saying, you know, here's how much money the state owes us. We could say that, but not what we would have done with it. I kind of don't like that very much.
Are you done, Kitty?
Yes.
Okay. Donna?
I would like to see you address some of the questions we've raised tonight on the taxpayers, what, what we'll actually see, what we'll, what we're paying in, what we get back. But then also on the quick facts on great schools, thriving communities, address the arguments against, and give us your take on that. That's on the flyer that was attached to our communication.
Donna, just, just to clarify, so, so what you're asking is that, is that we try to work towards trying to understand the, the initial question that you had asked in regards to the amount that the Boulder taxpayers would be paying in, would, would that be greater than the amount that would actually come to the school board? And I think Bill had shared.
I think he shared it'd be hard to get that answer, but.
So, you know, Bill, you know, we, you, maybe we can touch base, and I can communicate with the board on kind of our plan of action, if there's something that we can do with that. If there's limitations, we'll let you know that as well.
And then just touch base on the arguments against that are on the flyer from.
So, those are pretty boilerplate anti-tax.
Yep.
Statements. So, I don't exactly know how to address that. Those are, those are arguments that are used on every tax increase that comes forward on a statewide initiative, not that there's been a lot of them, but I don't think they're any more specific to this one in particular, graduated income tax, which is prohibited under Tabor. This amendment seeks an exemption from Tabor for the specific purpose of funding K-12 education for graduated income tax. So, that's kind of.
Yeah, just give, give me your take on, on the arguments against. And I, I do think that some points were brought out about will this money be used like we're led to believe it will be used? And I know there's no guarantee, but I think Kathy made the point that the RTD is still an issue on, here's what we're promised, but here's what we get. So, I'd like more information on how we go about making sure that the money's used, how our, our constituents would like to see it used.
So, specifically, that's the board decision on how much money comes to the district, that, how it gets spent, that's the board's decision, just through the normal budget process. What the legislature might do in a School Finance Act that so astronomically redistributed dollars that pushed more money away from Boulder to somewhere else. I mean, even Denver has a pretty high cost of living. Cherry Creek has a high cost of living. There are a number of places that would be equally affected, Douglas County, big voting blocks, that it would be hard to push through a School Finance Act that detriment, detrimentally affected Boulder to the extent that it would be worse than what the, the superintendent's proposal was, which is ten-ish million less than this is.
Kathy?
So, Donna, that's why I think if we could think about a resolution for Casby that says something like, we wouldn't want legislation that tracks what we think we're going to be, you know, something to protect our interests, that's why I brought that up, because we'll have to do that proactively before we know if it passes. I mean, we don't have to follow through on the resolution if it, you know, Casby can withdraw it, but I just thought that would be a good way to kind of protect us going forward. And then, Bill, I thought it might be helpful, I know we won't know till, I think it's September eighth, which other ballot measures are going to make it, but if Fix the Damn Roads passes, K-12's going to be hurting if this doesn't pass, because it takes a huge chunk of money out of the general fund. So, I just think if you could tell us as we go along, kind of what that looks like, that might be helpful.
What the other things out there.
Yeah.
Okay, any other comments about the resolution for Amendment seventy-three? Okay, so we'll move on to our last item for agenda setting. You have a list in front of you of a lot of things that we've shared. And just a reminder, we're having a board retreat next Tuesday, where we're going to talk a little bit again about agenda setting, about prioritizations and things like that. But in the meantime, if you have a topic, this is the time to bring it forward. Board members. Shelley?
Yeah, I met with Tracy Markle and her partner, something Dr. Kennedy, and they're the experts on screen time and gaming addiction, and they're national experts, and they're here in Boulder.
Did they send the letter, the email to the board?
I, I think the board heard from them.
Yeah.
Yeah. So, I would, I would like to have them come and talk to us. I think they, they are experts on the topics that are up for us right now, and I think it would be good for the board to get educated on what they have to say, so.
Okay, anything else, Richard?
Yeah, I want to see that K-8 bilingual program aloft at Unihill Agenda topic. Talk about it at some point in time. I don't know whether it's next week or, but soon.
Okay.
Risk of sounding like a broken record, I'd like to see us bring around the Casby resolutions, if we want to do that. And also, I don't see anything in here about, I think it'd be really helpful to get some more information on, since we have a new director on our CTE programs.
Okay, CTE, Casby resolutions, K through eight, screen time. Any other things to add to our agenda list that we can then maybe start prioritizing next Tuesday? All right, so with that, I'd like to adjourn our meeting.